May the 10th, 2021, I called the meeting to order at 4:00 PM. Everybody's good? As always, just turn off your remote, your devices other than your, your system we're on to vibrate. Well, ask anybody if they have any additions or deletions to the agenda today?
Yes, your worship, we have, we have to remove the delegation scheduled for today. We'll reschedule it to the 25th of May.
Okay, so that's the New England Gold Chemo Forest Management Corporation rescheduled to the 25th of May. Anything else? Okay, hearing done. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, May 10th, 2021. Regime of council is circulated and amended. Move by.
Counselor.
Okay, I got Counselor Valance and Counselor Dubushi. Any questions? Call a question all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Carrie? Any disclosure of interest today? Hearing none, I have a motion here from the previous council minutes that the council hereby adopts the minutes of the regime of council held on Monday, April 19th, 2021 as circulated or amended. Move by.
Counselor Lake.
Okay, Counselor Lake, Counselor Jingra, thank you very much. Any questions on that and errors or missions on those minutes? Hearing none, call a question all in favor?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Carrie? Okay, up next with the CIO reports and the report on municipal building permit by law, Mrs. Korczynski.
So when dealing with building permits, the town of Marathon follows and complies with the Ontario Building Code, or OBC for short, and the town's official planning zoning by law. Until recently, the town has always had a chief building official on staff to monitor building code adherence and permitting. An open search continues to fill this position within administration. The purpose of creating this bylaw is for it to be used as a tool to encourage residents to consult with the town before construction and comply with the Ontario Building Code Act and obtain a building permit when required to do so. Currently, if a resident builds without a permit, the only avenue for enforcement is through the Ontario Building Code Act. This would require a summons to Ontario Court and a potential hefty fine regardless of the scale of the structure. This bylaw will allow for municipal education and enforcement on a smaller scale while still having the option to use the act and its penalties when required. The bylaw outlines what is required by the town from a resident or builder when applying for a building permit, such as drawings, site plan control, grading plans, et cetera. The bylaw will also lay out when a resident or builder is required to call for an inspection of the work completed by a chief building official or building inspector, along with the timeline in which an inspection is to be requested. This bylaw is not, not meant to be punitive by its nature. Having the proper building permits issued and inspections completed by the municipality reduces the liability to both the permit holder and the municipality and ensures structures are built according to the code. Following the Ontario Building Code ensures builds follow standardization and consistency in building practices which create safe structures. There are no financial implications. Council's options to consider are approved by law number 2005 as presented, approve the bylaw with amendments, and your, your administration recommends that option A be selected and that by law number 2005 be adopted as presented today.
Great, thanks for that. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation of municipal building permit by law and for that the appropriate by law be adopted later in this meeting and approving it for the building permit bylaws. Move by.
Counselor Valance.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Dubushi?
Um, yeah, so this is because we don't have a chief building inspector regardless day, we should be contacting the town about the need of a building permit regardless. So is this a duplication or is this a stopgap because we do not have an onsite building inspection?
Uh, no, it, it's an addition to what's currently available under the Ontario Building Code Act. Uh, so this is, you know, us being proactive. Um, we want residents to consult with the municipality. Um, right now it's myself and our works manager, Mr. Hishka, handling the inspections and the permitting. Um, and I can say it, it's gone quite well. Um, you know, it's an additional burden on time, but um, I think the message is, is out there that we want people to consult with us because number one, we're able to provide sound advice, which is really good for residents from an insurance perspective. Um, but the second thing is, um, you know, this gives us the ability locally, um, you know, to utilize education and, you know, last resort enforcement as opposed to if we did have a situation of enforcement right now, we would have to go directly through the Ontario Building Code Act, which means that it would not be dealt with locally, will be dealt with at the provincial level. So this is just something that I think traditionally we've missed, to be honest, um, and this just ensures that it's on paper for administration to utilize.
Good, thanks. Counselor Lake?
Uh, thanks, your worship, uh, and good question. I think that was lots of, uh, what I was gonna ask, but a couple of things are like, I think about, uh, two things. One is, uh, so, you know, if I was gonna build a structure on my property, uh, the last person I would want to build it would be me, uh, because I'd want it to stand up. So I'm gonna go to a builder, one of our local builders in town. Is, uh, as we go forward with this process, is there a way that we can really communicate with those people? Because lots of the building I think that does go on in town is through a, a pretty small group of builders. Uh, so just having them in that loop, uh, which I think would be pretty important. And two, I just wonder about, uh, you know, some of those government forms are pretty tough. So just making sure that we get them in plain language and as simple as possible. I just think, I filled out some forms around building in the past and they're, they're actually pretty complicated. And I don't know how as a municipality, we can kind of, you know, make sure we get the information we need without it having been too daunting. Like you wouldn't wanna give a package to somebody and have them throw their hands up saying, I'm not gonna build because this is ridiculous. Uh, so those are my, my, my two questions.
Yeah, so they're excellent questions. Um, you know, part of the, the process we've undertaken this year, uh, even without a CBO on staff, um, is to, to start more public education, um, and we'll certainly do that with the approval of this bylaw. Uh, the other thing that we've done is, um, we started to create guides, building guides around things like garages, decks. Um, you know, those types of structures generally the ones we see within Marathon, um, and we're posting them online and directing people asking questions to, to have a read of those first, uh, because they provide a lot of information with respect to the permit. Uh, you know, building permits look very official and very complicated because they're legal documents. Um, but they actually are quite straightforward to go through. Um, and you know, through this process, you know, residents engage with the municipality and we could provide a lot of sound advice and filling them out.
Good, thanks. Counselor Dubushi?
Uh, yeah, just to follow up or in a sense there, um, there's not many positions municipalities are required to have. Uh, one of them, if I remember correctly, is a chill chief building inspector. Are we in jeopardy of providing advice to potential builders uh, about the construction and whatnot when we don't have the qualified, sorry, people on staff? I mean, basically, if you said yourself and, uh, the works manager are providing guidance, do we put ourselves into a little bit of jeopardy? Say we approve a project or, or a kind of some kind of construction and it doesn't fall within the parameters or whatnot? It is, I mean, because everything we do is because of litigation in a sense. So is, are we putting ourselves in jeopardy or is the fallback always they still has to be finally inspected?
Yeah, so there's, there's no liability. We'd obviously prefer to have an CBO. Um, but, uh, you know, as default, the clerk does have the ability to sign building permits, um, and legally bind the municipality. Uh, certainly, Mr. Hishka has the experience as both the works and operations manager, as well as, you, you know, a class A carpenter, uh, to provide some, uh, you know, advice. Really, we, we, we quote the code, right? We, you know, we don't base it on experience. We base it on what the Ontario Building Code says. Um, and we're, we refer people to those sections. Uh, we have contracted a municipal planner, uh, to help us in dealing with, uh, our official plan, our zoning byline and, uh, minor variances. So I think under the circumstances, we're comfortable with, with how we're proceeding. I guess the, the flip side is if we didn't utilize this model while we try and attract a CBO, which has been highly difficult um, over the last two years would be we wouldn't be issuing any permits at all. So, um, I think we have a, a very proactive, um, team we have in place. Um, and we do have professional resources that we reach out to when we have questions that we're not sure of the answer of.
Good, thanks. Counselor Lake?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, I, I think about the situation that lots of folks see themselves in and notwithstanding the price of lumber. Uh, it seems like lots of people are, uh, interested in doing home renovations and lots of building right now. You see it as you go around town. Um, just in case people ask, I'm trying to recall, is there a, so if I'm building a shed, is it 10 by 10 that trips the need to get a building permit or do you need a building permit for anything you're building on your lot?
So those types of questions are answered in the guides. Um, as an example, um, you know, when do I need a building permit for a shed? When do I need one for a deck? Those types of things. So the first thing that we try and do is refer people to the website. Um, and obviously if they have challenges, you know, uh, with technology, you know, we'll assist with hard copies. But that is the type of information that we're starting to populate the site with.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks for that. I do have the motion in front of me and, uh, with the mover and second expression, I'll call a question all in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Up next, we have a verbal report on the clubhouse, good to golf course.
So thank you. It's just, just a brief update, uh, for council and, and the public on where we're at with, uh, the clubhouse and we do appreciate the public's cooperation in, in staying out of the construction area. Um, you know, while there's a, a number of contractors on site right now. So, uh, the new build is into its final month of construction, uh, with building handover to the town scheduled for June the 7th. Um, administration is currently developing the operating plan for this facility, which includes golf as well as food services. Um, but finding and hiring qualified staff has presented some challenges to date. Um, unfortunately, today's media reports are reporting that the current Ontario State Home Order will be extended to at least June 2nd, and this will continue, will include continued golf course closures as well. Uh, so in past years, the May Victoria long weekend has been administration's target for course opening, weather dependent, of course. Uh, so the administration will now be prepared for a June 2nd course opening, should that be allowable under the province's restrictions.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Dubushi.
Uh, yeah, uh, it's sad news again that this, uh, government hasn't been listening to the need for outdoor recreation. Is there any plans on, um, either the Thunder Bay District, through the Thunder Bay District Health Unit, through, uh, Noma or through AMO to pressure or to ask the government to reconsider those, that those closures? I mean, I'm not just talking golf courses. I'm talking tennis courts, anything where socially distancing is possible in the, in the outdoors, a part of the activity. Because, um, I know there are restrictions in other provinces on the number of people who can golf, but there are, from my understanding, Quebec may be the only one that has really strict, uh, conditions on golf or tennis, but I do believe most are always open. And is there a way that we can express to the provincial government through either one of our lobbying groups or even ourselves to ask them to reconsider? I mean, when he first came out and said playgrounds were included, they did back down because there was, you know, some pushback and it was a dumb decision, but, uh, is there any avenue that we can take or through our various groups take? Because I know the Ontario Golf Association is actively trying to persuade the provincial government to reopen or allow not just golf, but outdoor activities to, uh, at least, uh, open.
So, uh, before I go to Counselor Jingra, I'll definitely take it back to the president as this was announced today through Noma and speak with her and also reach out to, uh, Grayden Smith, the president of AMO to see if there's opportunities that we can have or he can have discussion with Minister Elliott and Premier Ford. The reality of us sending another resolution off isn't gonna do much. Uh, we have a meeting Thursday as well set up with Dr. Demille as our regular Thursday update on vaccine rollouts and other issues within the Thunder Bay District. We will then, uh, approach it on that level because I think all 17 mayors are in on the call typically or representative of each community. So there will be a great opportunity for all of us to reach out and talk to her about that as well. So we'll see what we can do on that front. Uh, no guarantees, of course. Uh, the, the government of Ontario is, uh, is making rules up for all of Ontario and we just gotta recognize we're a different part of the beast right now. So Counselor Jingra, I'll go to you.
So my question's kind of along the same line. If the government of Ontario does decide we can reopen, um, golf courses, will, will the construction be kind of ready to do that for that long weekend or do we still need more time?
Yeah, so we would be implementing a contingency plan, which we have been working on. Um, there, we, we won't have the building any earlier until, you know, before June the 7th. Um, but in the event that we're able to open, um, we will have golf, of course, it'll, we'll have some form of structure out there, likely a, a trailer on a short-term basis, uh, for things like, uh, you know, memberships, uh, you know, just basic snacks until we get the full handover of the clubhouse. So, uh, we do have a plan A and we do have a plan B.
Counsel, thanks you. Counselor Lake?
Uh, yeah, thank you, worship. Uh, so two questions. Uh, one is, uh, just, uh, being mindful of the fact that there's a, a second club out there. It's the Cross Country Sea Club as well. And I know we had, uh, asked about making sure that before the building is handed over, we get both the golfers and the skiers if in it, if possible, otherwise a virtual walk around, uh, just to make sure that we're kind of getting a constructed building that works for both groups. Uh, so just, uh, following up on, on having those meetings. Uh, and then the other one, uh, that, that first comment you made, uh, for the CIO about it being difficult to find, uh, uh, employees, uh, to work. When it comes to the operation, uh, especially when I think about the kitchen, uh, are we going to have that in-house? Are we thinking of contracting it out? Um, do you see benefits in either direction or would it be easier to get someone to take it in either way? I'm just not, I'm wondering what the administration is thinking on that.
Yeah, so with respect to the first question, uh, certainly we're in contact with, uh, the Cross Country Ski Club. Um, and I know Mrs. Goodchild's had an additional follow-up virtually with them. Um, you know, we're, we're getting close to a position now where it, you know, we can certainly look at doing a tour. Um, you know, before the building is closed in, it doesn't make a lot of sense because unless you have a knowledge of the plans, you, you know, you, you won't really understand how it's gonna look in a, in a final situation. So we're certainly cognizant of, uh, of, you know, those, uh, discussions. Um, and we'll, we'll certainly be following up with, uh, with that group. Uh, with respect to, you know, the operation of the building, um, given the pandemic scenario, given that it's a brand new building, um, I think we need some time to really evaluate longer term, i.e. 2022. You know, what is the best scenario from, you know, an operational perspective? Um, I think our, you know, our goal this year obviously is it's gonna be a nice, brand-new building. We wanna get, you know, up and, and open, uh, as soon as we can. Um, you know, it'll be limited services to start and we'll build out as we go. And I think at that point, we'll look at, you know, does looking at a third party make sense? Uh, you know, I can tell you that, you know, I've been around long enough to know that, uh, you know, I would say our success with third-party contracts has been limited, um, in, on some of our facilities and, and at times, um, it takes more time to manage the actual contracts than to actually manage the facility. So, um, administration will be taking the better part of 2021 while we're open to evaluate those options, um, as we head towards the, the fall and the winter seasons.
Thanks. Counselor Dubushi?
Uh, I know that your report concentrated on golf, but we have other aspects of our, I'll say, outdoor activity that may be in jeopardy. Uh, Penlake Park in the camping season, has there been any word about that? Because, uh, right now, I believe they're closed provincially in, in parks, but is there, is that in jeopardy? Our season at Penlake also in jeopardy?
Yeah, we currently cannot be open. Um, we are ready to open. We had targeted this weekend to open Penlake, uh, the campground. Uh, so operationally and functionally, we're, we're ready to go. Uh, we've had a lot of interests, a lot of reservations. Um, it'll be highly unfortunate, um, if we're not able to open the park, um, because we have had a lot of reservations this year. Um, but I guess, you know, it, like the golf course, it's tied to what the province does. So, you know, a, again, I think it's a bit frustrating, you know, knowing that, you know, camping, you know, with your family is something that you can do safely, just like golfing. So, uh, you know, as the mayor indicated, maybe he can bring the same message forward and group it together with golf when we talk about outdoor recreation.
Yeah, thanks. We will. Counselor Lake?
Uh, yeah, and certainly I think the CIO is exactly right. I think for all of council that the frustration with, you know, living up here when you can do something safely is clear. Uh, the, the one thing I do think about that golf course though, and I'm just, uh, to administration is, you know, we've, we've always had a, a moose hall and a legion for those big, uh, like weddings and events in the community. And as we see service organizations start to struggle, uh, and again, I just think about, you know, the fact that we're in that late-stage construction. Um, you know, if you're using your crystal ball to look out, you know, five, 10 years, uh, for the CIO, do you, do you envision that maybe that, that golf club is gonna start having to hold some of those functions? You know what I mean? The moose is in trouble. I don't know the state of the legion. Uh, but I just, I wonder as we build if, if that's, uh, something we might wanna be cognizant too, because I, I know people, you know, if you wanna have a wedding, golf courses are big in other places. I just, as we construct, is there something we need to be thinking about as we get there?
Yeah, it's a good question. Uh, you know, we, we have definitely had requests to utilize the facility in 2021. Um, you know, which we, you know, have politely, you know, said no to this year only because, you know, we need to get operational and, and now it looks like it'll be June before that even happens. So unfortunately, before we know it, we'll be talking about the fall. Um, the other big concern that I would need to get some comfortability around because my, it's my name on the license is how liquor would work um, at the facility. So not only are we corporately liable, but with my name on there, I'm personally liable. So there are a lot of factors to consider, but certainly it's something we'll think about longer term.
Okay, everybody's good with that? Thank you for that update and, uh, hopefully we'll get some traction in regards to the government of Ontario, uh, with, uh, both Grayden Smith and Wendy Landry and, uh, see if we can move forward with that and, and with our meeting with Dr. Demille this week as well. So thanks for your report. Up next, we have the, uh, report on investment policy, annual treasury report, copy to all members, Mr. Verbal.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Financial Policy 11 states that the treasurer shall provide an annual investment report that details the status of the current investment portfolio and transactions made since the last report. The in-report shall contain a statement about the performance of the portfolio, a statement by the treasurer as to whether or not, in his opinion, all investments were made according to the policy and goals adopted by the municipality and any other information that council may require that in an opinion of the treasurer should be included. So in 2019, bank interest was $83,000. The interest rate was 2.05% from the TD Bank and 2.4% from the one investment, which is a consortium of Ontario municipalities. Term deposit interest was $80,000 and realized income in the one investment was $21,000. There were no redemptions or purchases made in 2019. There were also no redemptions or purchases made last year. But in 2020, bank interest fell to $52,000. Like everyone else, TD decreased its rate to 0.55%. One investment pays a slight higher rate at, uh, of a premium of 0.365%. No, sorry, 0.365%. Term deposit interest was $83,000 and one investment we realized income of $49,000. As of December 31st, 2020, book value of investments in one investment was $1.4 million. There was $4.2 million invested in term deposits and $4.7 million are located in various bank accounts. Not reflected in the one investment portfolio is unrealized change in market values. In 2019, the unrealized value was $158,000. Last year, the unrealized value was $213,000. Investments were made according to the town's investment policy, and this is for your information only.
Good, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much for that report. No questions on that. Up next, we have a report of the 2021 tax ratios, Mr. Verbal.
Another part of the annual budgeting process and setting the tax levy. Section 308 of the Municipal Act requires single-tiered municipalities to pass a bylaw each year to establish the tax ratios for the taxation year. Section 313 prescribes tax reductions for vacant and excess lands in the commercial and industrial classes. Tax ratios establish the relative tax burden for each property class. Council has the authority to adopt alternative ratios as long as they fall within the provincial ranges of fairness, which is for the multi-residential, 1.01 to 1.1. All other classes, the range is from 0.6 to 1.1. Since our ratios fall outside the ranges of fairness, we can only move closer towards these ranges. Historically, the province has provided another option in utilizing revenue-neutral transition, uh, transaction ratios to mitigate the tax shifts amongst the classes due to reassessment. But because the province deferred assessment in, for this year, the revenue-neutral ratios are not permitted for 2021. Administration is proposing no changes to tax ratio. So as always, residential will remain at one. Multi-residential will be 1.1. Commercial and shopping center will be 1.25. Vacant lots and vacant property will be 1.1. Landfills will be 1.1. Industrial will be 2.25. And large industrial tax class will have a ratio of 2.63. So to illustrate the effect of tax ratios, assume a house and a business are both worth, uh, assessed to be worth $100,000. If the tax rate for the residential class is 3%, the homeowner would pay $3,000 in municipal property tax. The business owner would pay 25% more or $3,750 in municipal property taxes. With the overall of the, uh, property assessment in 1998, the province recognized that not all properties classified in the commercial and industrial property classes are being occupied to the same extent. So it codified two subclasses. Vacant land is property that has no accessible improvements or buildings on it. Excess land is property that has not been improved as, and it is in excess of the land required to support the improved portions of the land. The Ministry of Finance prescribes tax relation, uh, tax rate reduction percentages of 30% for commercial and 35% for industrial properties. 2017, the province granted flexibility to municipalities to alter the reduction program by altering the discount outside the 30 to 35% range and even eliminate them. The reduction of vacant commercial properties was eliminated as the town of Marathon already has the optional tax class for parking lots slash vacant properties, but excess commercial properties still receive 30% reduction and vacant and excess industrial, uh, properties are given a 35% reduction. Changing tax ratios does not generate more tax revenue. All it does is shift the tax burden amongst the tax classes. Increasing the ratios will expose revenue to a higher risk of tax write-off to the commercial and industrial, uh, property owners. So the options are adopt by law 2003 and approve the ratios as presented or adopt the by law with amendments. Administration is recommending that option A be selected and we establish the rates as detailed in by law 2003.
Thank you for that report. I do have a motion here in front of me that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on 2021 tax ratios and for that the appropriate by law be adopted later in this meeting, approving the 2021 tax ratios. Move by.
Counselor.
Okay, Counselor Lake moved. Counselor Jingra, second questions. Counselor Dubushi?
Uh, yeah, so he's, so you stated here that we eliminated the vacant properties, uh, for both commercial and, um, large industrial, or was it just the industrial class?
Uh, we've just eliminated the vacant properties for commercial. We still have, um, the vacant discount for industrial properties as part of our economic, um, enticement.
Okay, Counselor Lake?
Sorry.
We'll come back if you have another one, Counselor Dubushi.
Um, thanks, your worship. Uh, so, uh, for the treasurer, I, uh, if I read the report right, we can't increase, uh, for example, large industrial, that we can only make it lower. So that's, that's kind of where it is. My concern over the years has been as our industrial and commercial classes have diminished, the burden relative to residents has increased. So residents are paying a greater share, uh, simply because there's more of them and there's been a diminishment. Is your sense that, um, an improvement to the, especially the large industrial, and I, I think I'm, I'm thinking of the mine across the road. If that were to go, um, and increase that large industrial, uh, body, would that diminish the, the need for residents to pay the burden? I mean, would it, would, would residents see their taxes go down if there were a larger industrial base or are the two kind of exclusive of one another?
No, if, uh, we do have.
No, if, uh, we do have more prop assessment coming in from those, uh, higher racial tax classes, the residential class would benefit, providing that council decide not to spend it on something else.
So good point, Counselor Lake, and good response, Mr. Verbo. But the reality is, the range of fairness is that the government's recommended is, is there as a range. We can increase the industrial tax ratio as we, we see fit based in our community's needs. But as Mr. Verbo just mentioned, with an increase of, uh, of generation saver example of the mine site, we're thinking about coming into, uh, into our operations and within municipal boundaries over the next two years, that dollars, those dollars generated would then assist us in taking care of some of the capital needs that the community has been putting off on the back burner, literally, uh, not getting done because we didn't want to go to the ratepayers, which is mostly the residents, and burden them with huge tax increases. So I think it's a win-win for residents as well as the, the industry, because we're not going to go to a higher ratio. And yet we're going to also have, uh, more dollars to take care of some of those capital needs that we know have to be done. So that's my response, I think. I don't know, Mr. Verbo wants adding on to that.
No, and again, the own, the province did give us the revenue-neutral thing, but that's only when there's reassessment.
Right.
And we've tended to shy away from that.
Right. And so we are now working on the 2020 to 2024, which we all know the impact has put off our 2021 because of the COVID-19. So we did have a meeting and I'll bring it up in my discussion with the, uh, the, uh, Noma AGM around the assessments for industry as well as residential going forward. So Impact's working on that, but I'll give a quick highlight on that. Counselor Dubushi.
Uh, yeah, just to follow up to the, uh, I guess the vacant properties, uh, since we're marketing, um, potentially large tracts of land that we've taken over, um, either the waterfront or other locations in town. Do we now control, say, people buying up that land? Do we now control it as a condition of sale that they have to work on that land within X amount of time? Because I'd hate to see people or industries or somebody buy tracts of this industrial land or commercial land and not develop it because they have that ability to, to wait on it. The idea for us to market this land is to get people to build on it and to create buildings that we can, you know, tax and, you know, and build industry and business in our town. So, uh, do we now do it through, I'll say, the conditions of sale, the building code or our built official plan? Because I'd hate to see us sell property and one thing I worry about is either speculation or somebody sits on land or buildings. And a prime example would be, I'll say, the former senior housing that is in private sale or private hands, but nothing has been developed. So how do we do those kind of conditions other than, uh, the rebate or the reduction in, um, vacant land taxation?
We don't get involved if the property is not ours, but all the surplus properties that we've been acquiring, we do have stipulations that, uh, all property doesn't sit as vacant land, and so they have to give us a deposit that will be held in trust. They have to get a building permit and so many times. They have to complete their construction in so much time. And if all that fails, then, uh, the property doesn't, the sale of the property isn't completed and we go back to status quo.
So Your Worship, if I could just follow, just one, one additional follow-up, because I, I think it's important, administratively that we're, you know, we're looking at, as Mr. Verbo indicated, uh, we're separating out residential, uh, commercial and industrial and how we view things. As an example, uh, we're going to be looking at a long-term lease strategy for the former mill site. Uh, you know, it, it took us 10 years to acquire that site. Um, and we know what happened really overnight with the former industrial user. We want to ensure that we don't put ourselves in that situation again. So one of the exercises we'll be going through internally this year is looking at that type of strategy to set us up for 22, or 2022 going forward.
Great, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, I, I think that we, we know we, we have some, some work cut out for us going, going forward with our capital needs in the community. So any, any additional, uh, assessment added on to the, on to the, the, the role will be great for the community. We can get some of those capital items tackled. So let's look forward to that and whatever the new assessment looks forward into 2021 going forward. With the move or a secondary's permission, I'll call the question all in favor.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Up next, we have the report on emergency protection agreement, Newmont Canada. Are you going to do that or Mr. Griggs, Mr. Skrzynski?
Uh, our chief will take that one. We'll get him some experience in front of council.
Okay, good. The chief, Griggs.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, councilors. Um, Newmont Canada would like to purchase a emergency protection with Marathon Emergency Services Department uh, for the surface buildings at the Golden Giant Mine Site and also remote sampling site. Uh, the agreement for the standby would be following itemized services, availability via dispatch from their black line safety device, onsite fire risk assessment twice a year, onsite fire response, emergency search and rescue for the remote sampling site locations, uh, one desktop training session annually, uh, participate in a one full-blown mock training event every three years and assist with notification of downstream users in the event if there was a catastrophic failure at the tailings dam. Uh, in this agreed, it is agreed that the contract price would be $6,500. Also, in the consultation with Newmont Canada, it has been agreed that the agreement term will be for a three-year term. Uh, discussion, the Newmont agreement would cover a period from May 1st, 2021 to April 30th, 2024. Financial implications, acceptance of this agreement generate $6,500 in revenue per year. The agreement also allows for compensation should the emergency charges exceed $6,500. Options, A, approve the bylaw and agreement as presented. Option B, do not approve the bylaw and agreement. Recommendations, your administration recommends that option A be selected and that bylaw number 2004 be approved as presented.
Great, thanks for that report. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attachment point recommendation on the emergency protection agreement with Newmont Canada. And for that, the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, approving the fire protection agree between the Town of Marathon and Newmont Canada. Move by.
Counselor Valance.
Counselor Dubushi.
So yeah, Counselor Valance move. Counselor Dubushi, second. Questions? Counselor Dubushi.
Of course, Kelly, I have a question. So, uh, it's just a call for service and, uh, is it's my understanding that it's a fee retainer fee or is it a deposit on services that they may use? Because one call out there, I'll say, on one of some kind of thing there would, would amount to more than $6,500. Um, and I gather that's annually. So is it a fees for service or is it a deposit on the potential fees for service?
Uh, so what we, sorry, go ahead, Daryl.
I, I just, I just wanted to, to add, Your Worship, that this is, uh, exactly the same agreement we have in place with Barrick.
Right.
So really what it is, is, uh, it's not necessarily a retainer. It's a yearly fee to engage with our emergency services. Um, and in the event we had to arrive on scene and provide service, uh, there is no upset limit. That would be determined by the type of service that, uh, we provide at that time.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Griggs, anything else to add to that or go to the next question?
Uh, no, next question's good.
Sorry.
Counselor Lake.
Sorry, he didn't quite answer my question here. So if we go out there and we spend $10,000 on a call, $6,500 of that was already paid for. Am I correct then? And so the billing would be $3,500 that they agreed to pay or is it just we now foot the whole bill?
No, they would agree to pay the, the balance, only those $3,500.
And since I know I've always spoke when we had other agreements, is this reviewed on an annual basis, uh, so that it's increased with inflation or do we just set the same amount as we did in 1985 or seven when the mine started?
Uh, no, it's set on a three-year term. So at the three-year term is when we go to do any kind of an increase is we've just locked in at the $6,500 for the, the yearly cost of the three-year term.
And did we raise it on the last three-year term with, I'll say, Barrick?
Yes, we did raise Barrick, uh, went up 2%.
Thank you.
Yep. So Counselor Lake.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just trying to remember back when I, I think when I started on council, we also had some fire agreements with, uh, Puckasaw and Naes. I'm just wondering, um, the two mines, do we have any other, uh, fire service agreements or is it just down to those two?
Uh, we're currently just at the two mine sites.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any other questions, so thank you for that report. And with the mover and a secondary's permission, I'll call the question all in favor of that agreement.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. No.
Okay, thank you very much. Approved. Okay, up next, we have a report on establishing waterfront development committee. Miss Goodchild, please.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, so on November 27th, 2015, the Town of Marathon vested ownership of the boat launch area from the Marathon Pulp Inc. The town has since completed several upgrades to the area and in 2021 initiated a new boat launch fee in order to invest funds into the continuing development of the area. The establishment of a waterfront development advisory committee will help ensure that an open dialogue is consistently drawn upon and effective consultation is occurring in areas of long-term planning and ongoing operation and maintenance of the waterfront and related services and facilities located there. This will assist council and administration from a strategic planning and budget perspective. Administration recommends that a broad range of usership, experience and interest be considered when comprising the committee. The makeup of the committee would consist of one member of council, the community services and communications manager, recreation, health and safety coordinator, and five members of the public at large. The role of the advisory committee would not be to make decisions but to provide sound recommendations to council on best practices and regulations. The advisory committee would follow a town drafted terms of reference and focused on areas of future development and long-term planning and public engagement and education. It is proposed that the advisory committee be formed in June of 2021 with a mandate of presenting a final, a strategy and final report to council by November 30th, 2021, which will coincide with the development of the 2022 municipal budget. The committee will remain functional and continue to provide advice and recommendations on strategy implement, implementation until September 30th, 2022. The options are A, approve the attached bylaw number 2006 authorizing the establishment of a waterfront development advisory committee as outlined, or B, do not establish a, an advisory committee at this time. So administration is recommending that option A be selected, approving bylaw number 2006 authorizing the establishment of a waterfront development advisory committee.
Great. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on the establishment of a waterfront development advisory committee and for that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, approving the establishment of the Marathon Waterfront Development Advisory Committee. Need a mover or a secondary, please?
Counselor Valance.
Counselor Jingra.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Lake.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So, uh, I think it's awesome that we're going to get, uh, some people involved in that, uh, that, in that boat launch area. It's a new facility and I remember when we, uh, talked about the boat launch fee, the passion that it evoked in the public. So what I really do appreciate is, you know, we said, yeah, there's going to be a fee, you know, it used to be volunteer run. That group is gone, so now it's the town, so there's going to be a fee, but I love to see that money going back into the facility and the very people that are using it and passionate about it having a say in how we spend that. I think that's, uh, that's good government. I think it's, uh, you know, transparent. It creates a really even and open playing field for the decisions we make. Uh, so I'm just really pleased, uh, I know how busy administration is, but to make space for that conversation. So I'm thankful to see that. Uh, and, uh, certainly, uh, excited to see what they come up with.
Great, thanks. Counselor Jingra.
Yeah, so just a question to make sure when we're looking for the members of, of the public, just to make sure we're not necessarily picking the, the first five that come to us, but making sure we really do get a, get a good sign of, you know, we get fishermen, we get people that walk down there, we get maybe, I know people go bird watching down there. So making sure we get a good um, selection of people that use it for all, all sources. So I'm just wondering how we're going to make sure we, with the processes, I guess, for, for making sure we get that.
Okay, so, um, people will submit their applications and they'll have a deadline to do so. And at that time, council gets to select the committees, but it will be up to you guys.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Counselor Valance.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Jingra pretty much asked my question. It was just, uh, kind of what the timeline was looking at filling the members for the board or the committee and how they would go about it. Would it be advertised on social media? Is it going to be through the form at town hall? Kind of how people go about just putting their name, um, up for the committee?
Of course. So it'll definitely be on our website, social media, and it'll be in the Marathon Mercury. Um, and we would like to have the committee formed in June 2021. I'm not sure, um, Mr. Skrzynski may be, uh, may be able to answer. I'm not sure, um, the regulations for how long it has to be advertised for as a committee of council.
Uh, yeah, there's no, uh, regulation required. Um, we want to turn this one around fairly quickly from a, a couple of different perspectives. Um, we do have some funding applications that we've submitted with respect to this area and we're, we're hopeful to hear back um, in a, a summer timeframe, um, which would provide funds to utilize going forward for that, uh, that area. So um, I, I see us having probably a two-week advertisement period, uh, assuming council approves this report tonight, uh, which then sets us up for the, likely the first meeting in June to bring this to council.
Great. Counselor Dubushi.
Uh, yeah, I'm just, uh, wondering about the way we've decided to word this thing waterfront development advisory committee. Because I think we're just, I, I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure there's no confusion over the fact that we are looking at developing that whole waterfront as either commercial, uh, light industrial, whatever it may be. We're looking at marketing that in, um, you know, as part of our, you know, strategic plan. This I could see as part of the recreational side of, or the community side of waterfront development, um, as part of an advisory board. I'm just a little concerned about how we worded this and maybe if we, if it's just my perception or I don't want it out in public that this is an advisory board that's going to go about on how we market the property, if we're going to do setbacks and whatnot. I think that's a, a thing that council should be deciding as part of the economic development. So, I mean, if it's just potato or potado, tomato or tomato, I don't know. But I think we have big plans or we, we're looking like we should have big plans for that property. And I don't want it to be confused with our economic development for the waterfront. I don't want it to interfere with, uh, you know, say, uh, projects that we may have out in the harbor. Uh, you know, we have a, you know, dock, deep water docking facility, you know, we have all those things. We want to do a harbor commission or a port authority. I just don't know if this is the right wording as this committee, because I really need to make sure that people understand this is separate from what we look economically at the waterfront development. Maybe, uh, you know, you know, if, and if it's just me and potato potado, you know, I'll give it up, but I think it's important that the wording or, or the message is, is straightforward on how we're, or what this committee has the power or is formed to do.
Okay, so I see Mrs. Skrzynski is probably going to answer that question, but I think it was very clearly stated in the, in the actual advisories mandated was that there was no decisions being made. It was about the, the advisory given direction to council, but I'll let Mrs. Skrzynski add on to that, then I'll go to Mr. Valance, Counselor Valance.
Yeah, I, it's a very valid question and I think, you know, we, we are certainly looking at recreation only. Um, that'll be very clear in the terms of reference, um, once that's developed, uh, by the municipality. But I think a, a simple amendment, a waterfront, uh, recreation development advisory committee does make sense.
Okay. Counselor Valance?
Yeah, for quick clarification, this is looking at waterfront, um, within the whole municipality as a whole, right? Not just the boat launch. Are we looking, could this encompass also the Pebble Beach waterfront? Could this, like, what's the full scope of, of this? Is the committee just for the boat launch or the community as a whole?
So the committee is, um, it's formed with the boat launch mostly in mind, so that's where the user fee um, is, is formed. However, if there is, uh, some planning that encompasses all of it, that again, it's an advisory committee. So it's, um, providing advice and, um, suggestions to council.
Great, thanks. Mrs. Skrzynski.
Uh, yeah, just to follow up, uh, to Counselor Valance's question, uh, it won't involve Pebble Beach, uh, from a practical perspective, only because we've already developed that internal plan. Um, and that, that's, uh, what we're hopeful will get funded on, uh, which we expect to have that announcement shortly. Um, but what we will be asking the committee Um, but what we will be asking the committee is, um, you know, how we can connect our different waterfront areas. So, you know, we've talked about internally, we have Pebble Beach, we have the boat launch recreation area, um, we have the Carden Cove area, so there are three really distinct areas of Lake Superior that we're fortunate enough to have within Marathon. Uh, one of the questions and, and, you know, the, the feedback we'll be looking for from the committee is how do we tie that together? And, and an example I can think of that, you know, has been successful for us is how we've utilized our signage program to tie together a number of our facilities in Marathon. So that'll be some of the strategic thinking that we'll be asking the committee to provide back to council.
Great. So, so now there's a request here before I go into the resolution and call for the, uh, the question. Uh, one member of council, and I know Counselor Valance reached out to me and I'm also interested, but I wanna make sure it's fair and equitable for everybody. So is anybody else in council interested in the position?
I would be.
Okay. So Counselor Jingra, Counselor Valance. Uh, Mrs. Skrzynski, you got a comment?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, from an administration, uh, matter, your worship, so, uh, the mayor is ex officio on all advisory committees of council. Um, so your, your participation is already granted, um, and it's certainly, we, we, we've recommended one member of council, but it's council's decision if they wish to have two, uh, on the committee.
Okay, so with that being said, uh, Counselor Lake, Counselor Tabushi?
Uh, no, I can, uh, I don't need to participate in this one.
Okay.
Other than the name change.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and same, if there's two people that wanna be on that committee, that's fantastic.
Great, so I think, I think that's awesome. So I think that with the ex officio part of the fact that the mayor can be involved in the committee as well as, uh, two members of our council, I think we terms of reference that, so I'll change the terms in here to have two members, uh, to, of council on that, uh, motion, and then, um, we can move forward. That's great that both of our young counselors are interested in the waterfront uh, recreational, um, opportunities. So everybody, everybody's good with that?
With the movers and seconders' permission to, to name change?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking right now. So just to, from one to two members of council and the recreation advisory committee rather than the waterfront development committee.
Should we say, uh, should we say up to two members of council instead of two?
I, I would, I suggest for the, this is a short term, council cannot bind a committee beyond their current term, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, two, two is good. Okay, so with the mover and secondary's permission, I made those changes in the motion. That would be the waterfront recreation advisory committee rather than development committee, and that two members of council be on the committee as well as the mayor as an ex officio on, on advisory. Call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Gary, thank you very much. Thanks, uh, Ms. Goodchild for that. Okay. Up next, I have, uh, the bylaws. Oh, actually, no, I should, before I go into bylaws, I was giving my report on the, uh, the actual, uh, Noma AGM that was held last week, virtually, uh, very well attended, uh, started off on Wednesday with a board meeting, uh, discussing, of course, the, uh, the AGM going forward and, of course, some of the key messages from the board going on into Thursday and Friday as well. Hundred seventy-five registered, uh, participants virtually, which is really high for Noma. It's probably just as high, if not higher, than our regular meetings in person. So, very well, uh, we went through the Thunder Bay District municipalities, well, the Kinnor and the Rainy River District, uh, reps, uh, given overview of what's happening in their regions as part of the Noma, um, mandate, and then, uh, Mayor Robin Jones, uh, who's also now the Chair of Roma, uh, did a presentation and greetings as well as, uh, For William First Nations, uh, Chief, uh, Collins gave a, an update and overview from the first, or For William First Nations community. And of course Danny Whelan, uh, Danny is also the President of Phenom, which is our sister organization to the east of us representing eastern, uh, northeastern Ontario. Uh, of course, uh, NDP's Judith, uh, Montiff was there, and as well as, um, Andrew Horvath came on and gave us an overview of what's happening from the NDP's level, uh, from the Government of Ontario as the opposition leader. Uh, Mi- uh, Michael Gravel came in and gave us an overview of what's happening with, uh, with, uh, the Liberal Party, and of course Stephen Del Duca came on as the Liberal leader and gave us an overview of the Liberals' uh, mandate going forward for the twenty-two election, uh, potential. Uh, AMO President Grayden Smith also came in and gave us an overview on what's happening with AMO and, of course, with the COVID nineteen situation, talked a bit about the gas tax, you know, the doubling of the gas tax from his supplies, uh, going forward, which is great news. We can, uh, look at some of those dollars going into infrastructure, talked a bit more about the blue box system. As you know, we all had a great update on that and worked with our, uh, recycling, uh, provider to make sure we're gonna be, uh, tuned in and worked well with the blue box scenario, infrastructure, infrastructure funding. And then, uh, moved into Wednesday, uh, sorry, Thursday. Thursday was, uh, um, a LAS, uh, through the AMO program, which we're part of, and we see benefits, uh, uh, to many facets, uh, of the LSA LAS program. Hydro One give us an update in regards to their programs, projects, uh, going forward through northwestern Ontario as well as the rest of the province. Talked a lot about the EV, uh, scenario and, uh, goes on to, uh, pass that on to the, uh, the, the producing portion of Hydro One, which was, uh, was gonna be given a presentation, they, they, I'll, I'll get into their scenario later. Uh, of course, uh, to Northern Nuclear Waste Management Organization, give us an update on where they are with the last two final participants, uh, in the program for the nuclear waste depository, uh, hopefully goes into Ignace, uh, just in north, northwestern Ontario. Huge amount of jobs, a hundred-year project. So great, uh, the IESO update on the prices and projects, and that was where we're gonna be talking about EVs. The fact that Ontario has provided most of their power from nuclear and gas, so sixty percent roughly nuclear and thirty percent gas, that the EV market is going to have an impact on if, if what the manufacturer's saying and the, and the consumers get a real uptake on EV market, the electric vehicle. There will be a problem with electricity, and I've been saying it all along through our AMO and Noma meetings, not just in Ontario, but there's gonna be a problem with electricity. You know, you can, you can wish that we can eliminate the impact of the environment, uh, one way, but you're gonna have problems on the other way with rolling black oats and not enough power, and he assured us that they're working very hard over the next ten years to get enough power to provide, uh, for this higher demand. If we have one hiccup in nuclear, though, Ontario was in really, really bad shape. So that was, uh, was a good update there. Uh, talked about council meetings going virtual for the future and how that impact as well as councils a mandate in regards to, uh, code of conduct. And then, of course, there was an update, uh, uh, with an awesome update on the school and the, there's a motion here, of course, in our agenda today, but the School of Medicine, both for Laurentian and, uh, and, uh, Thunder Bay, uh, Lickard University, and the impacts it have on universities if they remove the independent, uh, facility, so, uh, talked a bit about that. The Ontario Northland Bus Service, of course, so the service is provided. I did bring to attention to the president, uh, Marathon situation, our bus comes in going to Thunder Bay at three AM. Wasn't really conducive for ridership, but she's working on a plan to try to increase more usership, because it is a very heavily subsidized, subsidized, uh, service, as you all know. I think Ontario Northline receives thirty-five million dollars annually from the Ontario Government. Impact update. This was going into Friday morning, impact update on regards to the assessment, uh, for the two thousand and twenty-one going forward, uh, that's gonna have huge, uh, impacts on all of us, as we hear from our treasurer. It might not necessarily change the ratios, but homeowners will see, um, see impacts because specifically here in Marathon, it's happening all throughout the province, probably all throughout the country, is increased housing costs and higher demand, so that, that will have a reassessment, because we're, we're based on a sixteen to twenty assessment, so there will be some impacts there. Um, the, uh, the employing, uh, employing in, uh, opportunities for immigrants coming to Ontario and specifically northwestern, somewhat northeastern, but northwestern Ontario, business opportunities. There's a lot of people in, in southern Ontario that would like to come here, but the opportunities are not really, uh, uh, there, but they're slowly blowing them out for both employment as well as, uh, business opportunities. Uh, the biggest thing that was presented, uh, through the immigration was cultural opportunities for immigrants, whether they're from whatever part of the world, as well as the coal. They just do not, they love the, the, the clean crisp air of northwestern Ontario, but they're not so much a fan of the, the coldness of our beautiful part of the world. Uh, that was discussed, and then, of course, we got into the bear pit and, uh, we had many questions and specifically Marathon had a question in regards to the, uh, the funding for the, uh, the compressed gas, uh, well, whether it was LNG or the compressed, you know, the government had made an announcement, uh, in regards to the hundred and ten million dollars or so for, uh, funding for projects. So we, we presented that question to, uh, to Minister Walker. He indicated that, uh, the, he's gonna make a decision over the next several weeks and we'd have a response back, whether it was Marathon was successful or not. We're hoping the Marathon and the four of the communities along the North Shore, North Shore Gas are successful, and we'll see what that looks like. Um, dedicated funding for municipalities was a big part of that for the questions. This course, this, the code of conduct, uh, twinning of the highways as they looked at the European model with the, uh, the, uh, three-lane scenario, as you know, uh, three lanes for five kilometers, then put a, a type of barrier up, three lanes for the other five kilometers going east and then uh, switching that off. We'll never see four lanes from Thunder Bay to Suse Marie, uh, but you might see the four lanes from Suse Marie to the rest of the province south, and then, of course, four lanes from Thunder Bay, uh, maybe going west, but in between Thunder Bay, Suse Marie, we're happy with three lanes, makes our highways much safer. Um, MTO highway conditions, of course, trying to improve that, and we have a whole new team of, uh, the ma- upper management in our area, so maybe there's gonna be some movement there. And a couple of other questions in regards to, uh, you know, impacts of, of each individual community is more specific to communities rather than to, uh, I'm, I'm trying to give you a, a, a broader, broader view rather than a in, individual community question scenario. So it was a pretty good session, it was very well attended, like I said, and, uh, really good presentations through the, uh, participants as well as the, uh, all the, uh, the sponsors. We had great sponsorship and a great, uh, um, a bear pit session with, uh, I think there was nine ministers or ten ministers in on it. So the virtual kind of, uh, opportunities are better, I think, when you have a virtual session, because ministers can make time to sit in for forty-five minutes rather than all having to travel to somewhere. So it was great. Any questions? Counselor Tabushi?
Yeah, on part of the sessions I attended or viewed, I guess, would be a better way of putting it is, I think we have to ask administration on how we're gonna handle our virtual meetings, uh, be at the, um, going into and coming out of closed meetings. So I think by next week we should, uh, or our next council meeting, I think administration has to come forward with some kind of, um, I guess criteria or policy or procedures that we can do it, because there was some indication that we may not be compliant with everything, uh, on how we set our closed meetings, um, even though we don't, a resolution doesn't come out of our closed meetings, it's just that the fact that opening and closing was supposed to be in public or whatever. So if I can ask administration to come up with a plan for our next meeting, uh, so we can address those issues. I think the other one too is, and, and I know it was virtual and I know we had an opportunity to type in questions, but from my perspective, I kinda think that they were lobbying pitches to the ministers, because I, you know, wasn't successful in getting some questions answered. Um, so I was just wondering if, uh, you know, it is great, it is great that they had the opportunity to, uh, you know, the bear pit session, but I was just wondering, you know, there is nothing like those poor guys who, uh, have to go under a collar when there's somebody stands in line and, and our mayor is kind of famous for going in line and asking the tough questions. And that's the only criteria or critique I would have of the issue is that, you know, is it being cold or are some of the questions being cold, you know, moving forward? But it was very successful and I appreciate having that opportunity attend.
So I can assure you on the question part, no, there was none of that, that we, we submitted, had submitted questions from Noma and, uh, and, uh, pre, pre, uh, put a package together to do, but the problem is, as you noted, and it's, it's no different in the live bear pit session. Ministers tend to go on, and if you noticed, we were dinging the ministers on a couple of occasions, we had to give them the buzzer to stop talking. So we had a system in place so that they wouldn't carry on and, uh, and, uh, go on beyond a minute or so for response. So it did probably three or four different occasions. They kind of made fun of it, because they, they, you know, chirped each other in regards to getting the buzzer, but they did get the buzzer. And, uh, I think the majority of questions that were presented, there were some other ones that weren't get, that weren't getting into the, into the queue, for sure, but the timelines were really, uh, tight. So thanks for that. Okay. Uh, go into the bylaws now. Thanks, uh, Counselor Tabushi. So the bylaw I got in front of me here is a bylaw number two oh zero three being a bylaw to set tax ratios, confirm property classes, and to set tax rate reductions for prescribed property subclasses for the town of Marathon for the two thousand and twenty-one taxation year. You read it first, second, and third time and finally passes tenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one. Move by.
Counselor Valance.
We got Counselor Lake, Counselor Valance, any questions to that bylaw? Here, you know, call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I think I got Counselor Tabushi froze on my screen. Is he there?
Yes.
Okay, good. Up next, I got bylaw number two oh four being a bylaw to authorize the fire protection agreement between a town and Marathon and Newmont, Canada. You read it first, second, and third time and finally passes tenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one. Move by.
Counselor Valance.
I got Counselor Valance move, Counselor Jingra second. Any questions of that bylaw?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Tabushi?
I, I'd ask that we reconsidered the, uh, billing rate, uh, on this. I think, um, just because it's, it's a three-year term, if this doesn't coincide with the, um, Barrick Agreement, which is at, set at the same price, it should be, uh, reflective of not just two percent per every three years, but should reflect the cost of living allowance of, say, two percent or one and a half percent per, per year. So if we either turn this out to coincide with Barrick, uh, on terms or readjust the price, uh, reflective on how long it'll extend past Barrick, I would, uh, that's the only question I have. If council is willing to consider it.
Okay, so with that being said, uh, I think we're moving forward with the actual bylaw now, rather than rewriting the question, so, um, the question should have been posed, I think, in discussion paper when we had it presented, that you wanted to have a change, an amendment to that. So now, this is the bylaw portion, I don't see the amendment going to there, but it reflects the three-year contract for sixty-five hundred dollars a year, and that this will be renegotiated in the twenty twenty-four, uh, termination of this contract. So that's when it renegotiated, whether it's two percent, five percent, or ten percent. Everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Okay, I'll call a question. Counselor Valance, Counselor Jingra move the second. All in favor?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Gary, okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have bylaw number two oh five being a bylaw to provide the administration and building code act within a corporation in the town of Marathon. We read it first, second, and third time, finally passes tenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one. Move by.
Counselor Lake.
Thank you.
Uh, second, Counselor Tabushi.
Counselor Tabushi, any questions of bylaw? Seeing none, call a question all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary, thank you very much. Okay, bylaw number two oh six being a bylaw to establish waterfront development advisory committee for the corporation town marathon, be read at first, second, and third time and finally passes tenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one. I need a mover, second, to put that on the floor, please.
If I made the, the new wording?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna get a mover, second, or first.
Counselor Jingra.
Okay. And who else?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, I'll get Counselor Valance second, so that the wording on this by, bylaw now, I'm just striking out with those mover and seconders' permission. The, uh, the establishment of the waterfront, so it'd be establishment of a recreation development advisory, uh, sorry, waterfront recreation development advisory. Waterfront Recreation Advisory. And then they'll be adding on the two members of council within the bylaw.
So that'll be changed and schedule, your worship and the terms of reference.
Okay, thank you. Good. So with the mover, second's permission, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary, thank you very much. Okay, so now we have a few of the, uh, the new business requests received from the, uh, the, uh, township of Georgian Bay seeking, uh, supportive resolution for the Planning Act timelines and for that a copy of the motion be forwarded to the individualist in the originating resolution. Mover, second, to put on the floor.
Counselor Valance.
Counselor Valance, Counselor Tabushi. So this basically is, is a, a request from the municipality to have the timelines associated with, uh, within the, uh, the Georgia, well, Georgian Bay, but for all of us throughout the provinces, have the timelines, you know, looking at from seven months down to four months, from five months to three months, you know, it just makes sense, because it doesn't slow the process down, so, uh, any questions on that?
It's, sorry. Is this for the application process, or is this for the timelines that it's for review? Because if it's like six months for review, that's ridiculous that you have to set aside that much time for a review of your planning act amendments.
Whereas the Province of Ontario Planning Act provides a legislative framework for processing development applications, including establishment of timeframes with permit applications. with permit applications to appeal for local planning appeal tribunal or council, so the timelines are set out in Bill one oh eight to be reduced. So you're right, it's when it goes to the government, the legislative process has that much time, they want, this is ridiculous. A lot of time, that's why government red tape holds up all economic opportunities.
Okay, so I just wanted clarification on it, thank you.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Up next, I have a motion and council hereby supports the attached resolution received from the Township of Springwater pertaining to the clean fuel standard. And further to copy the motion be forwarded on to individual listed on originating resolution, need a mover, a second to get that on the floor?
Counsel Lake.
Okay.
Counsel Jingra.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Lake.
Uh, yeah, I just, so this is obviously a pretty regional issue in terms of agriculture. I'm just, like, I try to, I just, I mean, I don't own a farm, I don't really understand anything about the issue, so I don't quite how, see how it's gonna impact Marathon, I don't know if maybe the CEO has any thoughts about this one.
Certainly wouldn't have an impact from an agricultural perspective, obviously the, the Canadian shield doesn't really allow for that, but I, I, I think about it more in terms of food supply, especially given thinking about the pandemic and, you know, you know, how important grocery stores were. And having, you know, Canadian-produced produce where this seems to be, you know, again, I, I think this is more of an example where there hasn't been a lot of consultation with the affected groups, right, these, you know, the, the government, you know, this one, both provincially and federally are putting these things in place really without asking questions, how does it fundamentally impact the user groups? So I think this is more about, you know, consultation as much as it is, you know, the actual legislation.
Yeah, for sure, and I mean, with the city outside of Thunder Bay, there's a lot of farming going on in agricultural opportunities in Thunder Bay region. So this, this could affect our neighbors very much so in regards to the Clean Fuels Act. And, you know, it's putting restrictions on their equipment that they might not be able to meet target-wise through the, through the emissions controls that the government's trying to set out. You know, we now, we have, you know, millions and millions of cars and, and factories running, and we need food put on our table, so this could have a great impact to not only the Thunder Bay area farmers and agricultural members, but also the throughout the Province of Ontario and throughout Canada. Because we do need to eat, we need to get food to our table, so how are they gonna put all these restrictions in place and make it mind-boggling? I think it's, it's, it's something that, as Mr. Skrotchinsky stated, there's never been or hasn't been enough consultation, Counsel DeBouchy.
I think the other por- portion of this one, if I understand correctly, is they would have to create a buffer zone where they can't use fuel or fuels around waterfront, well, navigable waters because of potential for spills and leakage into those issues. So it's kind of may reduce some of the, you know, agricultural land footprint that they are allowed to. So I can support this thing moving forward, even though we're not drastically affected as much as our resolutions are heard in Queen's Park.
Well, I think the, like, any resolution, the more community support a resolution, the, the more maybe government listens to the, to the, the least the concerns that are raised. Okay, no other hands, call a question all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, Carrie, thank you very much. Up next, we have a council support in hereby supporting the attached resolution received to the municipality of Calvin pertaining to the application of the carbon tax. And further copy this motion be forwarded on to individuals listed on originating resolution, need a mover, a second or?
Counsel Valance.
Thank you.
Counsel Lake.
Thank you, this one's similar to one we just passed, but it says now putting a carbon tax on top of the fuel that the farmers use to provide food to our table, so any questions, comments? Counsel DeBouchy.
Of course, I tell you, I do, I would also, I, I can support this because I know they're, they're frustration. However, I think that as municipalities, at least it should be brought up either at Noma or AMO. Is, should we be lobbying also the provincial government to see or to get a plan that's approved by Ottawa on a carbon tax, because one of the problems happening is because we don't, or Ontario doesn't have an approved plan, all the taxation from the carbon tax goes to the federal government and then they dole it back as they see fit. Now, you know, if my understanding of the carbon tax is if Ontario had a plan, we would collect the tax and we would be, or the Province of Ontario would be able to allocate that money as they see fit, so I think that's a broad issue also that municipalities should show some support in or at least, you know, ask the government to consider, you know, getting the plan so we can, we as Ontarians can get the tax that's paid in Ontario.
Yeah, it's, the carbon tax, the funny thing, you're collecting it from one hand and giving it to the other, and it's, it's more of a bureaucratic red tape scenario. Like everything government does, you know, if you're gonna apply a carbon tax onto an industry, you're not gonna, you shouldn't be re-beating another industry because they're cleaner than the guy across the road, I guess, my view, but you know, carbon tax really does hinder the, the cleaning of the air, you need to have a different approach, not just a tax, you have to have incentives to have scrubbers and, and various filter systems and, and reductions in fossil fuel, maybe equipment or other things to, to, you know, have a change in our environmental impacts rather than just, I'm gonna tax you because you can't get clean today. So I don't know, it's, it's, it's a real mess, but they're asking for the supporters' resolution so it doesn't impact them in regards to the cost of their operations as well as, you know, of course, it will all impact all of us as well, again. Okay, with the mover, a second's permission, I'll call a question all in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Up next, we have a council hereby supports the attached resolution received from the Township of Arch Pachelli, Pachelico, no wait, Arch Pachaligo. I may not have pronounced saying that right, pertaining to the road management action on invasive fragments. And further to copy the motion be forwarded on to individual list on the original resolution, and I wasn't too sure what the fragments were. Uh, mites were, and then Mr. Verbo sent a picture, it's pretty scary, I need a mover, a second or?
Counsel Lake.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Lake, Counsel Jingra, questions? Counsel Lake.
Sure, so, and again, thank you to, to the treasurer for sending pictures of these things, they're pretty massive. I remember a few years ago, Purple Luce Strife was the, the plant, and then there was one called Cow's Bane. Certainly, we see a change in our environment, there's turkey vultures where there never were, you know, I think deer are moving in, like, my, I think it's great to be looking at, like, we've done it with the pine beetle and stuff like that, but my worry is, you know, I think about the forest industry and the way that they get shut down if a caribou is anywhere near anything, or if you've come across a nest. Like, I, I do worry about inviting governmental oversight into resource-driven places. I think, you know, there's that, we ought to be real careful about asking for government control of a place in which we're already going into the bush for resources, so I'm a little nervous about this one, I don't know, maybe the CEO might be able to comment about whether this is just for that very particular sort of invasive species or there, there's the, this fear of governmental overreach in terms of resource extraction.
In, in this case, there's, they're, they're asking for specifics with respect to highways. So the concern is the safety around highways with this type of invasive species because of the size that it can, it can grow to. So really what they're asking for is that in the highway management plans, there is a strategy developed for dealing with this particular invasive species which doesn't already exist, so I, I think in, in this case, you know, because it does boil down to safety on Ontario's highways, it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Jingra.
Yeah, so with Mr. Verbo's email, he also mentioned that we do have some in our, in our neck of the woods. He mentioned the east side of Peninsula Road just before the turn to Highway seventeen, so I'm just wondering if there's something, are, are we dealing with it at, at, right now with any way, like, are we doing something about it or? Yeah.
So in, in our case, it's natural, so that's the difference. So the natural species is, you know, obviously, you know, original to our area. It doesn't reach the size of the invasive species, so it doesn't become a hazard on the roads. They're particularly asking to deal with invasive species which are not natural to Ontario.
Okay, all good. So with the mover and seconders permission, we'll call a question all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thanks. Up next, I have a motion that council hereby supports your test resolution in the city of Branford pertaining to the outdoor recreational activities. And a copy of this motion be forwarded on to the individual listed on the originating resolution, mover, a second for that, please. Okay, I got Counsel Valance and Counsel DeBouchy, questions, any?
Just hopefully they'll hear us.
Counsel Lake.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I think you've heard from all members of council that this is, is probably one of our top priorities right now in terms of community health and opportunities for our citizens to get out and be healthy and, and, and for our mental sanity. I just think we can't support this one strongly enough.
Certainly, and as soon as we're done with our meeting, I will send off an email to both Wendy Landry, President of Noma, as well as Grayden Smith, the President of AMO, identifying that very thing, and I know with AMO, because AMO represents all four hundred and forty-four municipalities in the province, there will be regions of pockets that are in a similar situation as Northwestern and Northeastern Ontario. So they can bring that and go to the government and say, listen, common sense prevails, we understand the impacts it has, and same time you have a hotspot or hotspots in the south or in GT area, deal with them, and, and, and really, you're gonna have to take the political brunt and say, yes, I know there's hotspots, we have to continue to have lockdowns. And I know there's spots that are not in, in a high, you know, caseload right now, that we can let the individual health units deal and make decisions based on the mental health of our individuals getting out and participating. And really, as you said, Counsel Lake, almost zero cases proven at golf courses or at, at, you know, walking trails. These are not high incident areas, so government's gotta understand it.
And camping.
Yep, so that, that'll be my, part of my email to them both is, is the golf courses and of course, both provincial and municipal campgrounds.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll call a question all in favor?
Yes.
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 Very nice, great. Okay, up next, we have the council hereby force the attachment was received from the town of South Bruce Peninsula pertaining to lottery license to assist small organizations and further to copy this motion be forwarded on to individual listing on originating resolution, move by.
Counsel Jingra.
Thank you.
Counsel Valance.
Thank you, any questions on that? Counsel Jingra.
So just to make sure I understand this clearly, so they're asking that small businesses be allowed to apply for lotteries to be able to assist with community, like, to raise money for, say, the food bank or something, not to raise money for their own small business, is that correct?
So it's a little bit poorly stated what they're requesting, so right now, and, and I'd be a little uncomfortable with this approach, so you know, obviously lottery licensing is highly regulated in the province, and we as a municipality are responsible for Marathon. There's a reason why you're required to have an organizational structure placed to apply for a license, because it ensures there's a governance structure and process. You know, on how those funds are utilized, i.e. you have a treasurer, you have reporting, things like that. This seems pretty open-ended on who and how you can apply for a lottery license, and in some cases, they generate significant dollars. So administratively, we wouldn't be in favor of something like this for our community.
So, and you know, Counsel Jingra, a good point, but the reality is, if you read in the paragraph that your, your brother and your sister can come forward to the town and say, I'm gonna get lottery license, you don't have no control over it if this resolution was to go forward. So the, the, the licensing guidelines right now are very, very clear and very understanding. The organization applies, submits a, a request and fills out an application, the municipality charges a fee based on the size, prize size, total control. The organization is, there's no fraud going on, it's all be reported back, and, and all organizations within our community, at least I know, still have the opportunity to fundraise, but they gotta go through the right channels and virtually or non-virtually, they can still obtain lottery license to have raffles. And just, it's all above board and transparent that way, Counsel DeBouchy.
I, I think this resolution weakens those checks and balances, and that's why I would really say I'm in favor of it, because if an individual or somebody can just do it, where's the oversight, where's the second eyes looking at how they're spending the money? So I don't think I can support it, I know why they want to do it, because some of those organizations or small communities don't have organizations that could maybe apply for it, but I still think the checks and balances are really important because there is that always that potential for, you know, misuse or an abuse, so.
Yep, okay, I think we, we have, with the mover, a second's permission, we ask to table this resolution?
Yes, I'm good with tabling.
Counsel Valance?
Yep, I'm okay with tabling.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have a council supports resolution test, receive the municipality of Shunia pertaining to resolving the partnership between the Northwestern Ontario School of Medicine, Nausen and Lincoln University and Laurentian Universities, and further to copy this motion be forwarded on to individual listed on originating resolution, move by.
Counsel Valance.
Thank you.
Counsel DeBouchy.
Thank you, questions?
So, yeah, my indication from Nosh and then, and the, I guess, people who are responsible for this as part of the Noma issue, did they not say that, that the things wouldn't change? It was just breaking up the official partnership or designation, because, I mean, they, both campuses have fair amount of credibility now, and I'll say infrastructure in place to continue the program, I'm just a little worried that you know, are we overreacting that this is just a transition from being, you know, fully supported and whatever, to just them, the both campuses having a medical school?
Right, so what, what the resolution basically says and what the universities come back to Noma and ask for support in regards to the other programs that are, and the registration through Lake Ed U, for example, not so much Laurentian, but because we're only dealing with our portion of it, as they were gonna be now an independent school of medicine with, with the ability to to not be associated with universities, which have great impacts on the universities, like, again, Lake Ed, we, I can't speak for what's happened in Laurentian. As we know, Laurentian's in a bit of financial crunch, so the reality is that the Lake Ed University feels that they should still be associated with Lake Ed University rather than having an independent, an independent accreditation school. Counsel Lake.
Yeah, you know, when I read this, I just naturally assumed that this was because of the insolvency at, at Laurentian, that Nausen wanted to dissolve that relationship because it's just a mess, and I'm not sure, again, I'll defer to administration to explain. I, I, how does it impact, you know, we, we obviously have students that may want to go there, Nausen gives doctors the region. How would this change impact any of the, ultimately, the, the frontline that we see? Would it impact the doctors that ended up being produced in the north or change any of those learners that come to Marathon?
I, I think not, from my understanding and discussion, we had through Noma and then Nausen. The impact would be at the university level where the impact would be greater for Lake Ed U, LU. And like I said, I can't speak for Laurentian, what's going on there financially or administratively, but our discussion through Noma and Laurentian, or Lake Ed U was about the impact would have on the separation and have an independent school of medicine. So it wouldn't impact the docs and the doc situations in our community, it's more an administrative impact that have on the university, so that's what we're asking. And I think it's gonna probably be a done deal, so, you know, we'll send it off, but I think it sounds like it's, it's moving forward at a, a rate that's not controllable by any of us.
I think, I think your worship, just to follow up on, on Counsel, the Counsel Lake's, you know, initial question, I, again, the, the frustration, you know, amongst, you know, the Northwestern Ontario communities is this was a ministerial-driven decision without any consultation with the municipalities that could potentially be affected, so, you know, once again, it, it's just, you know, a decision made in the south for the north without asking us what we think, and I think that's frustrated a lot of people.
And I think Counsel Lake is right, and I think a lot of that is driven from what's happened in, in Laurentian, so this be a separate body, an independent body, but anyway, we're gonna pass it back to him and ask him for their support. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I got a adjournment here at the hour of five twenty-nine, we will be going to a closed meeting of council to discuss. Where's my little green sheet here? Property and personal, I believe, I know I have my little green sheet. Help me out there, Daryl, where'd my little green sheet go? Oh, right here, okay, sorry, I just got a small desk with a lot of papers on it. We're going into, in regards to solicitor client privilege, including communication necessary for the purposes and position plan, procedure, criteria and/or instruction to be applied to any negotiation to carry on, to be carried on or on behalf of the municipality local boards. negotiation to carry on, to be carried on or on behalf of the municipality local boards. We'll be discussing those things in an in-camera meeting. So we adjourned at the hour of five thirty PM and going to an in-camera. Thank you. I need a mover a second or?
Counsel Valance.
Counsel Jenga.
Thank you very much. Okay, Counsel Valance, Counsel Lake. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Counsel, make sure you stay on, please. We'll take a, a short break and we'll reconvene.
Yeah, a couple of minutes, everybody, okay?